Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Jensen?
Mrs. Weller?
Here.
Mr. Porish?
Here.
Mr. Goldenary?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mr. Bartel?
Here.
And Mr. Murka?
Here.
Mayor Wolper?
Here. At this time, I will ask for the approval of the minutes for the November 13th, 2017, Latrobe City Council meeting. I know that the minutes of the November 13th, 2017 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone. Thank you, Mrs. Weller. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Goldenary. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'll ask for approval of the fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of November 2017. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Murka. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Before we get into the agenda items, I have, we have two items here that we'd like to address. The first one is, we have an announcement that we're kind of excited about, that we'd like to make, so I'm going to turn this meeting over right now to Jared Trenzo, Tramar Latrobe Revitalization Program. Jared?
Hello. Thanks for having me back again, you all. I think I was here in June, and we talked about the streetscape project and the scope of that. So I had an update today with some visuals. Steve, our architect, who's responsible for a lot of the biggest signs in town, he's a light guy. So, we had applied for that federal grant, and unfortunately, it didn't happen. It was very competitive. Out of 100, there was $180 million from requests at the state at this time, but less than one-third of those were funded. However, the back door, they came back from Thanksgiving, it's also Saturday, there's an envelope under my door, and I'm thinking about they should have increased their generous grant to a little over $400,000. So the entire scope that we wanted was given, which was awesome. So, we're really, really excited. That was basically the same amount, in total, that we are seeking from the state grant. So, what does that mean? This is basically, more or less, what we're now able to do. Initially, up here with what we were able to do with 20 lights, and now, the scope has basically tripled. These two red axes are the saturation of light there, so we won't use those. And then, some of these cross-sections right here, if we can get, sort of fringe elements, if we can get a little bit more, we're able to do that, but this is all, it's really great. So, and then here, I just have illustrated the traffic light apparatus. That's a separate fund coming at the end of 2019, 2020, that we're working with the city in Pendott and many different players, but that's the crosswalk, curb cut, traffic light synchronization updates. Moving to that, the birds I can do, we really think this one's transformative, it was in one place for, at least I know, since they've arrived on the wall about 10 years ago. It's definitely exciting. Quick note on the traffic light apparatuses. Right here, this is in the Panning. They've recently upgraded their entire infrastructure with their night driving through, blown away. The whole town looks completely different. But, in lieu of a big ugly dooseneck, you strap two decorative streetlights with these cast iron bars onto the streetlight itself. And then, there's a rather minor decorative base, this is new role with how they, the bolts are, they stick up really high.
Jared, can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah. And then, this is the actual final poll, what it's going to look like. This is photoshopped, this is not an exact model, but this is the exact model and the specs. These are, I'm proud and excited to say they're made in, made in America, actually made in Pennsylvania, cast. And these are not aluminum. These are pretty much the Cadillac of streetlights, as I put it. It's cast iron. So, also, the base, they are re-tolling for free for us. Instead of having the slide, the bottom protected base over, it splits, so it comes into two. And so, you know, if anything would ever happen to that base, because it's completely soft resistant, more so than even powder coated aluminum, you could just easily switch it out if something massive hit it. Excellent. Is this downtown, or is it right here, take a sample of what we're talking about? Again, the initial premise was, you know, we have the lights are highway, the city's been getting any contract next year, I believe something like $60,000 a year will be saved, when you can adjust that, I think that's the number. You guys can see a lot of spray paint around, it's like my kids got to it, they're just doing all the measurements on the ground. Right now, I mean, what we have is really bad. This is so outdated. We got some, and black tape, I need to all around my house to fix up, but this is our, this is how they have it here, it's not, not the greatest. Some of these are supposed to be buried, they're up here, but this is just a shot of detail. I was in Pittsburgh for the National Main Street Conference, I'm just showing some shots of a, of really cut down, the LED lighting, it definitely makes all the people of your town more noticeable. Station Square, full of businesses and people, at night just to tell you you're building a town, you make it slow down traffic, you make it more walkable, it's the same for open day. Just a quick note on the exact type of light we're getting. Years ago, actually right when Wayne came in, we worked with you all, we funded this project here. These are West Penn lights, rented, these are really low, bottom of the barrel, they're aluminum, they're goofy, they're in sand, they're thin, so the lights we're getting, again, are definitely a higher grade than this. This is close to what we're getting on the bridge, but it's not as good, but it is, it's a decent representation. The basic difference, again, these are not cast iron. Steve is here, I'm trying on over there. Steve designed, really grateful for his position, led into the bridge, not just having Jersey bearers and lovely lights, we go off to design as a celebration, and then they engineered it in this direction for the new bridge, so hopefully they'll find whatever's ever done. And just a quick plug on some of the projects we've wrapped up for the end of the year. Just finished Mozart in Toddoff, we never thought that we'd be able to get to both of these in one year. We were also shocked that the integrity of the substrate was very, very much intact, you would know from the lovely 500 combo drops. But, they scraped this all by hand, used a special primer twice. I remember Mayor Rose, he's saying, "Wow, it looks amazing." It was actually just primed. This, I, you know, I have memories now, this building's been re-pointed, it's a gutter, it's sealed, there's no more water coming in, no more hard work, it's a wind eddies. And now the building's, at the time, this building's been completely sealed as well, and they did a great job there after, really small paint brushes again. Beazey just moved into town, they're down by Beale, San Francisco Falls, check them out. E. Kai Peet has taken over in up in Schofield, she's fantastic. Laura has retired for health reasons. These individuals helped design and minor signage. We developed buildings, we helped with the signage, you could take a look down Main Street. Coinopingers, I'd say that's actually more of a major redo. And we're excited about Dr. Slancy and Mr. Roth. Dr. Slancy has invested an incredible amount of money, he's expanding a lot, he's already hired a new dentist, and they're going to hire more, so that's fantastic, they're on Main Street. Main Page Street, after a lot of debating, eating a lot of unhealthy stuff, they finally agreed, we'll be doing elements of that over the winter, that's going to be a big challenge. And finally, because I don't want to forget to invite everybody, our business incubator from the federal grant we got is opening, or been cutting anyway, next Wednesday, so you're all invited, sorry, I have to do that. You're all invited, it's at 11:30, and everyone's here, if you want to come, you got to move on. So, but this is a economic development tool we offer, again, free rent for up to nine months to incentivize development, not just talk about what jobs we can bring. This gives us something extraordinarily unique. We're the only city that offers a SOD grant that comes after they graduate with free grant with an incubator. It's been a good partnership with the SBC, so we team the businesses up with consultants for free to go over everything they need. And we also have new tenant already, so that's exciting. Okay, that's it. There's the Christmas, the big Christmas present.
Thank you, Steve. I just want to reiterate the point that we need to recognize the fact that Catherine Mavis McKenna Foundation, and, you know, through Linda Box, has, has given us the money to, to do the full scale project. I think Linda, I spoke with Linda personally to thank her for this, because it is a major, major contribution of about quarter of a million dollars. And I think everyone recognizes the fact that, you know, it changes the whole look of your downtown. And I know I've driven through some communities like this, and I've walked and drive through them and go, "Wow, would this be nice to have in Latrobe." And, you know, that's a very important factor, if you want to attract businesses and, and into your downtown, is that, you know, that it, that it looks inviting. So, on behalf of, you know, myself and, and I think this council, I want to make sure we, we thank Linda Box and the Catherine Mavis McKenna Foundation for this very, very generous grant. Thank you, Jared and Steve. Next item on the agenda is, we have members of the American Legion Auxiliary, Mr. 515 here, and they have a donation for the Latrobe Fire Department, so Chief Brazili, if you want to go meet with the commander back there. The Legion had a fundraiser for the fire department, they had a fabulous band, and it was a very good time, so I'll turn it over to Mary.
As part of the American Legion ways, because everybody thinks about veterans, and we actually do a lot with youth, children, and absolutely the community, so as good faith effort, we did have this benefit from the American Legion family, which consists of the American Legion, the American Legion Auxiliary, and the Sons of the American Legion. So on behalf of all of us, from the Thomas B. Anderson, Post 515 in Latrobe, check for $1,000 that's provided to the fire department. Thank you, sir, for everything you've done.
As American Legion and other organizations in the city, helping each other, this doesn't happen. I will say, I'm a little disappointed in our people for not turning out as much as they should. The band was excellent, and the time was good. I ran into people I haven't seen for 35 years, and I had a good time, my wife had a good time, and I kind of, for lack of a pardon, being in the community, reiterated for them that, you know, we need to attend these thankful people doing, doing us some good in the community, they've recognized us. We appreciate everything you do for the community also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, both. And I just want to, you know, to reiterate, this is what makes communities like ours so very special. I was talking to the commander, and he told me a little story about what prompted the idea of this, of this benefit, and I believe it has something to do with them having a problem with their flagpole or something, and you guys came out and helped them out, and there's something similar to that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we, I've been friends with Charlie Gordon there for years and years, and Charlie knew I belonged to the fire department, I worked with Charlie off and on in some projects and stuff, and when I worked for the Commonwealth, he did some contracting work for us. So 30 years, Charlie knew I was involved with the fire service, and he, he called me one day, and he asked, you know, he said they had a problem with their, with their flagpole, that the rope, and being that it's a, it's an organization for veterans, they should have a flag, American flag flying, so they called me and asked if I could help, and I took the ladder truck out, and probably spent about a half hour at best, put a new rope up for them, and I bought some new clips, and we took care of that for them. We've done the senior center out in Fifth Ward, I've done family videos, so just about all the hose houses, the city building, so anybody that calls, we just recently did Pace Industries aerodiecasting, so, and I did the Latrobe Elks. So, we do this all over the place to try to help people, but it's organizations helping each other that kind of make, make this a fun thing for everybody, because without helping each other, it doesn't get done. And my, my last, in saying that, ask yourself, what if nobody volunteered to help anybody?
Exactly, and that's, and that's-
And that's kind of what makes the world go around here.
Yeah, and that's what makes our community so special, and I want to thank the members of the American Legion that are here tonight, for all of the good things you do for our community, and, and I'm glad to see you getting the recognition that you deserve, so thank you very much. Okay, moving on. At this point, we have our citizens' request portion of the council meeting, this is to deal with items that are on the agenda. If the item is not on the agenda, we will have a portion at the end of the meeting to discuss citizen requests about anything else that might be on someone's mind. So, with that, anyone have anything that they'd like to speak about related to items on the agenda? Yes, sir. If you would go back to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you would, please keep your comments to three or five minutes. Thank you.
I'm Timothy Byard with Benchmark Engineering from Rockland, Hound. I am here for the Varnik subdivision, just in case you have any questions about it when you get to that item on your agenda.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion related to agenda items? Okay. Moving on. Committee reports. Finance committee, we've done nothing right now. We're going to pass the budget tonight, so we've been working on that with Wayne and members of council, so we'll pass that budget tonight. Public safety and public works?
No, we're due for a meeting before the next Tuesday, but I don't know if we want to push that back, because we're going to be a week.
Okay, personnel committee, can we introduce our, okay, can we, I mean, we haven't voted on our agenda, but can we? Personnel committee has, has made a recommendation to hire Holly Payton as our city secretary and director of the next year in finance. Holly, would you stand up, please? Say hi to, hi to Holly, everybody. Welcome, welcome, Holly. Events committee? Jerry, Jack, anything? No. Parking committee? Okay, and we had our showcase last month, so we'll probably try to have another one in June, huh? Spring. Spring. Okay. Ordnance Authority reports?
Nothing new, madam.
Oh, there's a lot new. Okay, all right. I don't have anything to report from Parkin Rack, we had our meeting, and we're working on our budget for 2018, so. Department reports. Mike?
No report, mayor.
Chief, a bit more?
Nothing to report.
Chief Brazili?
Just everything went good with the Christmas parade and the bonfire, everything went off pretty good down there, we didn't have any incidents, so it was a pretty good time for the community that day.
The weather cooperated, it was nice.
The weather cooperated, yep.
Good. Neil?
That's it.
Anne? Zach, you're up.
Item 10A1, establish real estate village rate for 2018. This is an ordinance entitled fixing the tax rate for general city purposes and other purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. There is no tax increase. The mills will be a total of 21.5, that is 21.3 for general city purposes, and 0.20 for the mill for the library.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Goldenary. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions or discussion? Wayne?
Mr. Porish?
Yes.
Ms. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Goldenary?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Ms. Marlowe?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is an ordinance entitled adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2018. The budget for fiscal year 2018 has total expenditures of $5,558,874, and has the exact same amount of receipts.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any question? Okay.
This is ordinance 21713. Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Ms. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Goldenary?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Porish?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution entitled approving the appointment of Holly Payton as City of Latrobe Secretary. This resolution sets forth that she's appointed to the position, sets forth her compensation and benefits package.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as, as, resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Murka. May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Porish. Any questions or discussion?
All right, this is Resolution 21737. Mr. Goldenary?
Yes.
Mr. Porish?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Ms. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
And Mayor Wolper?
Yes.
Now, we can officially welcome you. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the Varnik subdivision. This is a motion, and the motion is to approve the Varnik subdivision plan regarding real property with tax map numbers 150310073 and 150310080.
May I have a motion, please? To approve the Varnik subdivision?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussions?
If you want to tell us what this all about is, you can hear us.
Sure. Can you explain a little bit about?
Tell us what you're doing.
Sure.
I have a picture.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Hey, I'm going to separate you two. You don't behave. Hey, I'm going to separate you two. Thanks, Bob. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We're requesting approval of subdivision of the side lot additions to the property owned by James Varnik. He owns five parcels that extend between Memorial Drive and Jefferson Street, that I outlined there on a copy of the tax map that I gave you. All the properties are in an R3 zone, which is single and molly family residential, so the providing business is a pre-existing non-conforming property. But one of the properties that's there, parcel 80, the fronts on Jefferson Street, is residential, but also has one of the construction company buildings on the back of that parcel, so it's, it actually has two uses on one parcel. And Mr. Varnik would like to separate those, the residential use from the business use, and that's what the purpose of the subdivision is, he's dividing parcel 80, so the commercial building is a side lot addition to the rest of the business property. This required a zoning variance, because there's not sufficient rear yard setback for either one of these properties, and the zoning hearing board did approve that variance, and we also went to the planning commission, and they reviewed the proposal, and they've recommended approval of it. So the purpose of the subdivision is to separate the pre-existing non-conforming use from the conforming residential use. There are no plans for conveying either of the properties at this time, or to perform any construction, but just the desire by the property owner to correct the situation of having both residential and commercial buildings on the same property.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, may I have a motion and a second? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The last action item on the agenda, excuse me, is approval of the meeting dates for 2018. The motion reads, to approve the meeting dates for calendar year 2018, and authorizing the solicitor to advertise notice of the same.
May I have a motion, please? To approve the meeting dates for 2018?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting dates for 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
This is motion, so then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's it for the agenda items. Any unfinished business that anyone wants to talk back today? Any new business? I will just mention under new business that, since we had an election, and we have some new council members, Mr. Kelly, who was elected, and Mr. Goldenary, and Ms. Weller, that were re-elected, well, you were elected for the first time, but you were appointed. The format is, the first Monday of every month, the first Monday of January, we have a reorganization meeting where we swear in the new members, and of course, I was re-elected as well, so I'll be to be sworn in again. And then, and then, the second Monday of the month is typically our council meeting, while this January, both of those baseball, on January 1st is, is the first Monday, and so January 8th is actually the first, the second Monday, but it's just the first Monday, that's not a holiday. So we'll be doing both. We'll be doing a reorg meeting on January 8th, and then concluding that, following that up with the January council meeting. So, in light of that, since this is our last official meeting, I want to thank Julie Beazey for her service in the community for the past four years, and her dedication to, you know, working on the student showcase, and, and many other things in the four years that she's been on council. We miss you, we will miss you, but we hope you stick around and come back, and maybe volunteer for some things, and, and so I want to just, you know, thank Julie and wish you the best. Okay, citizens' request. I have a feeling we have some people on the audience that want to talk to us. Okay. Go to the microphone, state your name and address, and keep your comments to three to five minutes.
Okay, that's killing me. Larry Fanny, 721 Wallen Street. First, I want to say on behalf of the, of the American Legion, that Chief Brazili did not dance at that great band that we had.
Oh, there he is.
We had a great band, but he did not dance. I sang. So, no, I just wanted to say, in, in support of the public revitalization work, they're doing some great things. It first started out with SODs, that, that generates more people wanting to come into town. This lighting, that generates more people wanting to come into town, and now with the incubator, that's generating businesses, that's going to stay in town and hire people. I'm involved in workforce development, as well as economic development. All, all the good things that are happening here in Latrobe, it's getting the attention of the economic development people from Westmoreland County, so now they want to be more involved. We're getting state recognition, so all the things that are happening here is a good thing, so I commend the mayor and council, and the city manager, and, and all the boards. With the money that's getting leveraged, with the foundations, this is a good story. There's so many cities out there, or towns out there, that, that are going downhill.
together to see if this can be resolved without having to go to the magistrate. But if there's repeated calls to the resident, to residences that are taxing, you know, emergency management services, then eventually we are looking at trying to find ways to get compliance. This is one of the ways that we're looking at. It's a draft ordinance that still needs work.
Chief Bummar, did you want to add anything? I'm not putting you on the spot, but you got one.
No, I just recently conducted a study on 20 properties in town. And my findings were that the further the landlord lives away from the property, the problems seem to occur. The properties that I studied also showed that a lot of these were too far away from the same tenants. The landlords aren't acting on that, acting on the complaint. As far as working with the landlords, I have no problem. If any landlord ever wants to screen a tenant, they just have to fill out the Act of No Law to get what they're privileged to get under law. Also, I have no problem sitting down with any landlord, but you know, I call up to you guys all the time, I don't have a problem with that. So as far as the ordinance goes, I have no idea. With the legal end of it, Zach has hinted at that, I have no idea what the state of mind of the magistrate would be looking at these kind of complaints. And what I thought of the ordinance was it was in the drafting stages anyhow, so I wasn't, you know, I didn't divulge into it too deeply. But there is a problem with non-resident landlords that are within, with over 15 to 20 miles away, we don't think there is one of the problems as much as the rest of landlords. So that's probably what I want to add to that.
John?
You want to go up there or sit here?
If you can talk loud enough, you can say that.
You can do it, John. So here's the thing.
First of all, state your name and address so we have it for the record.
I'm John Coons, 2339 Rainwood Avenue here in Latrobe. But I own five properties in Latrobe. I live in Dairy Township. But here's the thing. I can do a credit check on tenants, I can do a background check on tenants through the state police. I can't do a character check on anybody. And as we've just recently seen with celebrities, athletes, with politicians, I can't know you, I don't know you until we've been around together for a while. So, you know, somebody can have what we think is the best character in the world, and what they do behind closed doors, I don't have any say-so. But here's the problem. Chief knows Jack Banger, he knows me, he knows Enzo Maney, he knows, and I'm only saying a couple, he knows the good landlords that are in this city. So we're --
That's right.
That's right. And we're not slum lords. We're not slum lords.
And I don't see you guys having a problem with this ordinance, because you're not the bureau, because you're already, you know, you --
We screen people the best we can, Rosie, but we can't screen everybody. So if there is a problem with one of our tenants, it's very easy for, whether it's Anne, Jim, or whoever does this, send out a citation. They know they're going to get paid for us, from us. He's never going to meet with an out-of-town --
It's not going to give that order. It's not.
Let's hope that it doesn't.
But where's it going?
But he's never going to meet with an out-of-town slum lord that owns some of your problem buildings in this house. It'll never happen.
Mr. Kelly?
I'll ask John this question. What if the city on the first instance, the police came and it was a founded incident, there was something, some criminal activity at play? They said, John, number one on your tenant, John, number two on your tenant, John, number three. Would you at number three say time for this tenant to go?
Oh, I would have asked her number one.
Well, okay. And I think that's what my --
There you have it, John. And let me just say, thank you, Jim, that's a good point. And let me just say, let us finish the ordinance. Let us, let us clean, you know, get it to the point where we're going to, we want to vote on it. We'll, you know, give you guys plenty of time to read it over and look at it, because, you know, we're not, in my head, I, with, you know, I agree with Mr. Kelly, we're not looking at a one-and-done kind of thing. We're looking at, over and over and over again, our police are being called to a place, you know, you know, two or three times in a week for the same people. Those are the kind of things we're trying to address. We recognize that you may get somebody who has a bad day and might have the thoughts of fault under them and it may never happen again. That's, to me, not, we're not, we're not looking to find people that are good landlords and they have, you know, a problem tenant or a period of time a problem tenant. So what we're looking to do is people that we have, you know, we've contacted or we've spoken to, in most cases absentee landlords, and that just don't want to address an ongoing problem. So once we get the ordinance, all the bugs worked out of it, we're not going to vote on it from at least until February, probably later than that. We'll make sure you guys have a copy of it and yes, Jim.
Would you think it would be reasonable if you had a problem tenant, we had to go out and address a legitimate problem, not a he said, she said, a legitimate problem with a disturbance of domestic, of violent act, or drugs, or something like that? If I came to you after the second call and said, I think it would be in your best interest to start a eviction process, would that be fair?
I'm with John. You can come to me after the first call.
See, you guys are the problem. You know that. And then, and we're not going to --
But we still could be affected by it.
I don't, I don't think so the way we have it in mind, but again, let's see what the final product looks like, and then we'll talk about it. Yes?
Rosie, I'm concerned, okay, should I be concerned, you know, with the problem, couple buildings that there are and the out-of-town tenants? I think the last time I was here was two or three years ago, and the big complaint was problem residential houses with the garbage and the rats and the trash. Those houses still exist today. And so it's three years later, well, we've sent letters and we've tried and we tried and we tried, but nothing is happening. So you've got this building on Main Street that is an absolute total pain, and well, we've tried, we tried, we tried, and nothing's happening. It's still there, you know, three years down the road after the ordinance has passed.
And that's part of the reason why we need an ordinance that has some teeth to it. You know, if you guys remember, because I think the last time you were here, we were talking about doing a landlord instruction ordinance. And, you know, we've kind of backed away from that because some of the municipalities that have done that are having, you know, issues with it. We're looking at this as something, you know, that will help us solve our problems. We want to do something, you know. I feel like our hands are tied, yes, Pat?
Well, my problem with that is, once the tenants find out what they can do to the landlord, well, no, you shake your head no, but if you get a landlord, if you get a tenant that doesn't pay rent, you start to put pressure on them, they could do whatever they want. And then we're getting fined for something because they're disputing us.
Well, let's, like I said, let's wait, let's, let's, let's wait until we get the final version of the ordinance, because Zach's still researching some things. And Zach, do you think you'll have something for us by January?
Yeah.
Yeah, final. And then, yes, sir. Wait, right.
Jack Banger.
Jack Banger, yes.
I think the problem we have here is we feel like we're being attacked all the time. What about a good person that undergoes two or three times, and you guys know this goes on, right, on a regular basis, but they're not in rental property, they're in their own home? I mean, that's --
That's toxic, ma'am. Is that, they're going to get fined for it?
Zach's going to answer that, go ahead.
This ordinance is going to apply to all residential developments.
That's all, it's going to pay ground.
Well, the ordinance hasn't been released, so I don't --
Because you were worried that if there was a domestic problem, you didn't want that person, you know, they'd be afraid to call because they might get fined.
Right, and there's, there's going to be, there are provisions in the draft ordinance that address where there's a legitimate victim who habitates the dwelling. Those won't apply.
We are picking on you guys. We're trying to absolutely increase everybody's property value by making those that aren't accountable accountable. And, I mean, that, you know, we appreciate the kind of landlords you folks are. And it's unfortunate sometimes that you have to enact, you know, ordinances or laws for the few to protect everybody, because it's, it's just frustrating us, and we're trying to do something to correct it. Larry, do you say, let me say something?
Yeah, just, I agree, you have to have ordinance with teeth. I mean, too many times there's ordinances out there that aren't in force, you have to have the teeth there to defend everything.
Yeah, so again, you know, what we could do is, once we get the ordinance, find, you know, the way we want it, you know, we can make sure, you know, we'll let you guys know, you can get a copy of it, we'll sit down with you if there's, you know, concerns that you have or ideas, suggestions you have. Because, you know, one of these properties is next to one of your properties, you don't want it, right? I mean, you want us to do something about it. So really, that's really what we're trying to do. And I will tell you, it's not a one-and-done kind of thing. I mean, that's not our intent, is, you know, first offense and obviously get fined. So Zach, when I --
I was just going to say, there's going to have to be, you know, three similar violations on the same premises within a short period of time. There's going to be an opportunity to try to mediate the issue and come to an agreement. And if there's, you know, no, if the owner of the premises isn't willing to come to some sort of agreement to remediate the problem, even then you won't be fined. Then we would just have the authority to present a case before the magistrate.
Please.
I just want to thank you all for being here. You know, one of the things, my short time on council that I noticed is that people don't really get involved. So, you know, you getting involved is a wonderful thing, because it helps us to see your side of things. You know, I know personally, I can't speak for everyone, but I've never been a landlord, so I don't know what you go through. I rented an apartment when I was young, you know, so I know that side of it. But the more that you can help us to understand what you're going through and things that we need to look at, I think, you know, it's great. So keep coming and keep talking and, you know, help us to help our community. I mean, we know, we all know each other well, so, you know, we'll communicate this and before there's a final vote, we'll have lots of discussion, okay? Anything else? Anyone, any other citizens' comments or concerns? Okay. City managers, your board.
Yeah, just something real quick as a reminder, we do it every, every year. We bumped it up two days this year. As of the 13th to the 31st, we will not be ticketing parking. You can park in downtown for free. Something, thought?
And I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Our next Agenda Front meeting will be after Christmas. So I want to wish you all a Merry Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. If you're not at the Agenda Front meeting, there may not be anybody but us. So I think we had a very successful Holly Jolly on Saturday. There's been a lot of really good, positive things going on in downtown. And I, and I can't tell you how excited I am about the streetlight project. I just think this is a real game changer, and it looks like we, Jared left, but I think this spring we should be changing those lights out. We met with PennDOT last week to talk about the 2019-2020 project where they're going to do a bunch of the intersections, the handicap ramps, and they've been working really well with us. They did give us a little update on the bridge. But they're saying now June 11th, and we had a little, we had a little debate, because I know they told us Memorial Day, so I sent the article in the newspaper the next day to remind them that they said Memorial Day. They said, we never said Memorial Day, but anyways. So it'll be done when it's done. So, I mean, you know, hopefully, they are, they are looking and maybe doing, they mentioned to Mike and I that they have, there's a window there that they may be able to do some round-the-clock work, so they may be able to shorten that time span. But right now, weather permitting, they're talking about starting on March 5th. So they'll be shutting down the other side and, you know, go through that all again, so. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. May I have a second, please? Thank you. All in favor? Needing adjourn.